Okay, I can put that away. Uh, so people get seated. I don't have Cory yet. Cory got sidetracked. Hello, Jason. They're waiting for you. Anyhow, this was the original six A. Just that one page.
Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
You bet. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins is absent. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Croft.
Here.
Introduction, presentations, and proclamations. The pro- NA is proclamation declaring November twenty eighteen as charitable tax credit giving month, sponsored by Yavapai's Big Brothers Big Sisters. And do we have Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters here? Come on front with me, will you please? Thank you very much. Proclamation, charitable tax credit giving month, November twenty eighteen. Whereas the state of Arizona tax credit program enables taxpayers to contribute four hundred dollars for a single taxpayer, eight hundred dollars for taxpayers following a joint tax return, and receive a dollar-for-dollar tax credit on the Arizona tax bill. And whereas the full amount can be given to a qualified charitable organization of their choice and a school of their choice, the taxpayer can use their tax dollars to express their beliefs and values by supporting a charity that does the work they hold dear. And whereas employees are urged to adopt the option to allow employees to contribute to a qualified charitable organization from state withholding, thereby not reducing the take-home pay, and whereas employees are encouraged to take advantage of the opportunity to contribute to a qualifying charitable organization from their state tax withholding without reducing take-home pay. Whereas by donating to a qualified charitable organization or a school, taxpayers are in effect given the opportunity to choose how to use a portion of their tax dollars. And whereas the taxpayers no longer need to itemize in order to participate in the Arizona tax credit program, and whereas the Arizona tax credit program is a way of keeping our tax money in this community, keeping tax dollars local through the charitable giving, tax credit builds a stronger and better community at no cost to the Arizona. I therefore, Daryl L. Croft, Mayor of the Town of Chino Valley, in partnership with Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, do hereby proclaim November twenty eighteen as the charitable tax credit giving month, and urge all of our citizens to recognize this observance and for the good of the community, urge residents to keep their money local by making a donation to a qualified local charity and school. And with this thereof, I have heretofore sent my hand and calls the seal of the Town of Chino Valley to be fixed on this twenty-third date of October twenty.
Well, of course, I'd like to say that I appreciate so much the partnership that we have with the Chino Valley Town Council and the community, and I think this is our fourth or fifth year for this, and we're grateful and we're thankful. And I'm glad to be here tonight as a representative, not just Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, but a longtime resident of Chino Valley myself, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to action item seven B. I'd like to pull that action item and continue it on to the de- first meeting in December. And I need a motion to that effect. December.
Okay, we got a motion to remove seven B and can- continue it to the first meeting in December.
Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So anybody that's here for the Kempy property, we are pulling that, sending it back to staff for some work, and it will be on the agenda again in December, first meeting in December. Thank you for coming tonight. Call it a public. Call it a public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call it a public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Do we have anyone? I- I know you led- the dance ladies are here, so. Why don't you come up, dance ladies? Yeah, yeah, they're already dancing.
Again, we'll do another dance. This Thursday, October twenty-fifth, at the Chino Valley Senior Center, and it's from five-thirty to eight-thirty, and the doors open at five for dinner, which they're gonna be having a hurry bullet chili and fixings and beverages and all that kind of good stuff. Hey, I'm your gentleman who's gonna be there performing is Keith, I'm Keith Enterprises, and he was one of the first people we had of our dancers, and everybody loved him and thought he was great, so we thought we'd bring him back. Tickets are fifteen dollars, and again, it goes to Chino Valley Senior Center, which of course helps the whole town, all this good stuff, so we'll hope we can have a great support, and have fun.
We have a dancer here, but I don't know if anybody else is.
Good evening. We hope that you would support us either by donation or buy tickets and bring even the family because it is.
A family affair. And I'm Anita Dumello, and this is Mary Rockio. We'd be happy to sell tickets, or there are tickets at the door. You know, just come and have fun as a group and as a family.
And it's for a great cause.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you there.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else for call it a public? Hearing none, we'll move on to response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity of the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters registered in call to the public or previous meeting. Comments regarding, we had two people speak, and their comments regarding the town code compliance process and signage for small business. We- we- we have a new staff member that's out doing code compliance, and she is maybe a- that person was maybe a little aggressive in some of the things to do. She has been put in another training program and restructured and redirected to how to handle it a little differently, so we're gonna move on with this, and we're gonna also work on the- the Stein code. That sign code has been revised since I've been on the council late years, a couple of times, and maybe we'll get it right someday, but it's a real problem, meeting everybody's need for signs, and it's hard to make everybody happy. Thank you. Let's go on to current events, summaries, and reports. This item, for information only, the mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events or ask a staff member to provide the same. Presentation and information requested by the mayor and council will be made, and questions answered, no action will be taken. I don't have anything. Do we have anything? Do we have anything? I'm just saying.
Nope.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to announce that we saw, we being the American Legion, saw the socktober that I believe the school district is doing, and the canned foods for the children. We got going, and our first night, we got three hundred dollars worth of socks. I've just gotta get them delivered to the school, but we are pushing it. We think that's a great program.
Okay. Town manager.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to report on a couple of things. First off, we had, um, customer service week was the first week of October, and in that week then we kinda overdo it with the staff as far as customer service and give them things, but one of the items that we asked for is for employees to recognize customer service over the last year and provide us with a story on customer service. And I'd like to thank the following people for having submitted stories. Um, or the people that were nominated were Jim Shinos, Alex Lerma, Kat Lordy, Merrily Easton, and Matt Gronick. Uh, people submitted stories on their behalf, but our winner, uh, which is a random drawing, was for Stacy Johnson, who is our technical services librarian, and she was nominated by Kathy Frohak for just kind of random work on how she reaches out to help other people and do things. So I'd like, Stacy is here this evening. I'd like to introduce her and offer or give her a gift certificate as well as Kathy for the nomination.
Keep up the good work. Thank you very much for the work that you do.
And then secondly, I just wanted to mention that the mayor and I had a community outreach last week over at the community center. It was with no topic, and we had probably twenty people maybe show up. It was a, uh, some people had seen the article in the paper regarding a proposed property, I'm sorry, road maintenance program, and had some questions on that, but it was a very good discussion, so. We're gonna be starting our public outreach this Thursday, actually, with one of our first meetings directly attached to the property maintenance program.
Anyone else in your staff? Okay, let's go on to consent agenda. All those items listed.
How about a quarterly report? Jason.
You wanna give a quarterly report, Jason? Okay.
No, Jason.
Okay, do we have one? Okay, we don't have a quarterly report. That's why I didn't say. I knew.
You're always on top of everything. I understand.
Consent agenda. Let me go again. All these items listed below are considered to be routine, may be enacted by one motion. Any council member requests to move an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. We- we have an item on there, which is a rezoning. It's a very simple rezoning with no contest, so we thought we'd try it on the consent agenda. If you have a problem with that, we can pull it off and discuss it. But I'm gonna ask, is there anyone wants to pull anything from consent agenda?
No.
How about this?
No.
Okay. Town clerk, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Six A, consideration and possible action to approve the notice of intent to call an election for the purpose of requesting authorization to levy a primary property tax for the purpose of funding a roads maintenance program. B, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen dash eight-five-four. That's the one we pulled, so we'll just not read that one. C, consideration and possible action to accept the September twenty-five, twenty-eighteen regular meeting minutes. D, consideration and possible action to accept the October nine, twenty-eighteen regular meeting minutes. Let me go back to B. I just realized what you guys are mumbling about up there. Okay, B, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen dash eight-five-four, rezoning five acres of real property from AR five, Agricultural Residential, five-acre minimum zoning district, to SR one, Single Family Residential, one-acre minimum zoning district. The property assessor's parcel number three-zero-six dash two-nine dash one-one-one A is located two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred, six-hundred-and-twenty-five feet south of the southeast corner of West Center Street and South Road One West.
No questions? No? Motion, please?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda A, B, C, and D.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Let's go on to action items, number seven. The council may vote to recess. The public may and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh-three eight-three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public. No action may be taken in executive session. Let's go to item A. Presentation by Prescott Councilmember Alexis Cho and consideration of possible action to appropriate funds for the Granite Mountain Hot Shots Memorial Partnership for a memorial at the Courthouse Square in the city of Prescott and the amount to be determined by the council. Good morning.
Good evening.
I see you got, I see you got your dad here, so I'm not.
Yeah, I brought my fan club.
I'm gonna be good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alexis Cho. I'm a council member for the city of Prescott, but I'm before you this evening as a board member of the Granite Mountain Hot Shots Memorial Partnership. The memorial partnership is in the process of commissioning a physical memorial to the nineteen fallen Granite Mountain Hot Shots that will be located on the southeast corner of the Yavapai County Courthouse Plaza in downtown Prescott. So this evening, I'll be showing you our design and then walking you through it, introducing you to our artist, and then ultimately hoping you would support a donation to the creation of this memorial. The Granite Mountain Hot Shots Memorial Partnership came together fairly shortly after the tragedy, and we've been in existence now for four and a half years. We were established to represent a broad cross-section of Yavapai County, and I do wanna take a moment to remember, um, Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe President Ernie Jones was on our board, and he passed away last month, and that was a tremendous loss to this community and a tremendous loss to our board, and so we appreciate his willingness to serve. Um, so February through June two thousand sixteen, we accepted public comment and ideas regarding what the community wanted to see in a memorial. Uh, we then took those ideas and put together a request for proposal and sent the request for proposal out to many artists across the country and across the world. Uh, we then received those submissions. Uh, we reviewed each submission blindly, not looking at who the artist was, but just looking at the memorial design. Uh, we chose to interview five artists and brought them into Prescott, uh, and they stayed at a hotel on the Courthouse Plaza to really experience downtown Prescott and the atmosphere that their memorial would be in. Uh, we then invited three artists back for another interview, more in-depth reviewing their memorial proposal, and we ultimately chose Deborah Fellows, and I will ta- talk a little bit more about her in a minute. And then, so this is. So this is what the memorial will look like from the front. Um, it is two solid granite spires with the names of the hot shots on the right-hand side of it. Um, the bronze is of a hot shot, and he will be size plus ten percent, so seven to eight feet tall. Um, and then below him says Granite Mountain Hot Shots, and it's hard to see, but below their name, uh, it says S.A. Quan Vediri, which was their motto, which means to be rather than to seem. And so this is what the memorial will look like from the front. We worked with an architectural renderer out of Phoenix to help us put together these images. And then if we move to the next slide, so this is what the back will look like. The back will be etched with the, um, alligator juniper tree that the hot shot saved in June two thousand thirteen during the Dozy Fire. And so this was something that the- that the community really wanted to see in the memorial, was us to include this alligator juniper, and so we're really excited about this aspect of the- of the design. And then on the left-hand side is a small bench, so people can symbolically sit under the tree that the hot shot saved. Um, and then if we move to the next slide, the, an important part of the design to us was what it would look like at night. And so the spires will be lit, and the bronze will be backlit, so it'll just be the silhouette of a hot shot. And so we really fell in love with her design. Um, and then the next slide kinda talks about who Deborah Fellows is. She is a bronze artist out of Sonoyta, Arizona. She is most known for her bronze of Barry Goldwater. That's in Statuary Hall in Washington, DC, and that, um, was commissioned by the state of Arizona. Additionally, she has a piece locally, um, right where the Miller Valley School used to be. There's a Boy Scouts statue that was sculpted by Deborah Fellows. So she's very familiar with Prescott, and we really felt that she'd be able to kinda capture the essence of what this memorial will mean to the community, not just for Prescott, but for this entire region and the- and the entire state. And so with that being said, I do wanna acknowledge a couple of our board members in the audience. We have Bruce Martinez, who is the retired fire chief for Prescott, and we also have Danny and Michelle Parker. Um, they have been influential in- in- in getting us to this point, and so we're really excited to have them here with us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out this evening. We appreciate you, Danny.
So at this point, we have released our design, and we are, uh, accepting donations. Um, I have flyers up here, if any of you would like one, also if anyone from the audience kinda describing our donation process. We are recognizing donors who give over one hundred dollars on our website, and then we actually designed and just received a really special challenge coin specially designed for this project for donors who give over two hundred dollars or more. And so if anyone from the public would like to donate, please let me know, and I can give you some information. Um, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? No, nothing. Questions?
No questions, just like it's a worthwhile project.
Well, we're gonna ask our finance director to come up and see if we have any money.
And I forgot to mention, um, the city of Prescott donated fifty thousand dollars to this project. The town of Prescott Valley will be voting on a fifty thousand donation, dollar donation on Thursday, and then the last Tuesday, the town of Dewey-Humboldt voted to give us two thousand five hundred dollars. So we're really trying to get a regional cooperation and a regional donation, and we would really appreciate any support you may be able to give.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do got one question. What is the total cost, did you say?
Uh, so we are fundraising five hundred thousand dollars. We're a little over two hundred thousand dollars in pledges and actual donations at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, in our timeline, we're trying to, um, we are hoping that it is ready to unveil and dedicate June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, but if we do need more time, we will absolutely take the time we need to get this right.
Thank you, councilmember Cho, for coming out and making the presentation.
I would like to make one comment, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, I know that there are several memorials in the area, um, but seeing that the- that the Parkers are, uh, supporting this, then, um, I- I'm all in.
Mr. Duffy, would you come up and tell us how rich we are?
Or not.
Or not.
Well, Mayor and Council, I really can't tell you with this unless you come up with a specific amount whether we have enough funds, but this is why we have a contingency fund budget for things like this that we hadn't planned on spending, and so it's really up to your discretion on the amount that we spend today.
Mr. Duffy and I sat down today, and we countered population, and- and we figured with our population versus the other population, it was about a ten thousand dollar donation.
That's what you're recommending?
Yes.
Okay. Comments?
Comments?
I can live with that.
Comments?
No, I- I would've calculated it just like you did, so, yes.
I'm in.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we donate ten thousand dollars toward the Hot Shot Memorial for Prescott, Arizona.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out.
Beautiful.
Okay, we- let's go on to item C, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding Yavapai County Ordinance twenty eighteen dash two, regulating portable communication devices and texting while operating a motor vehicle. Chief Nguyen, or are you gonna?
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, and I'm sure you're aware, um, the county recently passed a handheld device, uh, better known as a texting ordinance, and I can tell you as of today, Prescott passed a, basically a mirror ordinance, um, measuring what the county has done. I just, Jamie can queue up. Councilman Miller said I can only have four slides, and I did five, but I'm not- I'm not, I'm not counting the, um, the, um, title. Yeah, there we go. Okay. How do I make it go down?
Use the keyboard.
Okay. One. I pushed down, it didn't go down.
Not working?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll do it.
I didn't wanna overwhelm you with statistics. When I started looking, um, myself, there's just, you know, website after website and page after page. Um, the National Transportation Safety Board is probably the most accurate, and some of these came from them, but nine people are killed every day due to distracted driving in this country, and a thousand injured, which is significant amount of the total crashes that occur. I was kind of, um, taken back by the one about the five seconds and how far you actually cover at fifty-five miles an hour, and if you think about the time it takes you just to read a text, you can cover a football field or maybe longer. Teenagers, uh, obviously have crashes at a much higher rate than adults, and when you factor in the distracted driving, that number goes even higher. So, next slide, please. Did a little more research. This isn't all-inclusive, but what I could find, these are the, um, areas that have already passed either a distracted driving or texting-only ordinance, and like I said, Prescott actually approved theirs today. Um, so they'll be the second eight, or the second one on this side of the mountain in Yavapai County to have an ordinance. Next slide, Jamie. We've been asked, one of the questions we were asked is if our officers could sign under the Yavapai County ordinance, and the answer is yes, we could, but the issues are the officer and the citizen would then be required to go to court in Prescott should the person want to challenge the ticket. So it's inconveniencing our citizens as well as the officers taking the time to drive over there, so being able to handle this in Chino would be a lot more efficient. And the last one, Jamie. Um, basically distracted driving is a- is a public nuisance because it is a danger to all citizens that are on the roadways as well as others that may be walking down the roadways when someone is distracted and not paying attention. We are an island within Yavapai County, and for our citizens, it's very confusing if we have a patchwork of ordinances. I mean, right now, they would be driving, you know, on Road Three North and be in violation until they cross Reed Road, and if we don't have an ordinance, then they would be in compliance, and then as they crossed into the county again, they would be in violation again. So it's- it's very confusing for the citizens, and I don't think very fair to have this patchwork. So, um, if you choose for us to move forward with this, um, we would do an education campaign, campaign, uh, we'd use our social media press releases, and we do a phased in enforcement like with any new ordinance where we- we do warnings for probably at least a month or more, just to get people, uh, aware of what's going on. So that is basically what I have. I'm, can answer any questions you might have or take whatever direction you might wanna go.
Is this gonna be a primary offense?
Yes, it is a primary offense. You can be pulled over for this as a primary offense, so you don't need a- another offense like a seatbelt to pull- pull somebody over.
The PC probable cause.
Right.
Anybody else?
Well, that was my question, is exactly, I mean, I know we can always tell when people got their eyes off the road, but how- how are you, what is gonna be the probable cause to pull someone over?
Under this, the officer would actually have to see them with a device. The- the problem with the texting ordinance is that some places have, they have to be specifically texting. So if we pulled them over and we saw something in their hand, and they said, "Well, I was watching a YouTube video," or "I was looking at my Facebook page," which we've seen, we wouldn't be able to charge them if it was strictly a texting. So this- this is any handheld device where the officer can observe that they have something in their hand and they're looking at that versus the roadway. And, um, it is a primary offense, so if the officer observes it, they can pull them over strictly for that. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, the offense is a traffic violation, or?
It would be a civil violation, not a criminal, but it'd be a civil violation.
It's a non-points.
Right, non-moving.
Okay.
And the only, I- I did reach out to the court and to the prosecutor's office and got a couple of comments. Um, the court clerk would like to set this up under our fine schedule, so instead of the hundred dollars the county has, I believe she told me it was ninety-seven or ninety-five, so it'd be a few dollars less than what the county's is, and it would fit into our town's fee schedule.
Okay, now, plus any other penalty assessments and surcharges?
Uh, the court has a whole bunch of that.
I'm aware of that, and that's why I asked, so that.
Right, it would be.
That hundred dollar fine.
Is base. Base fine, and then.
Actually.
Could grow.
Could grow too.
They grow exponentially based on, there's court improvement. Close to, on- on criminal traffic, and most of it can be, it can be close to double. Uh, the judge actually has some discretion in what she can and cannot waive, and so she has some discretion on that, and some things are just mandated. But there's, everything has a base fine, and then they have their, all their surcharges.
Okay.
So we're gonna do an education before we actually start enforcing this thirty days?
Yes, sir, and I also talked to Mr. Frank Marbury and asked about signs at the ends of town, and he said we could talk to ADOT and see about getting signs that would notify people as they enter on the highway and possibly Outer Loop Road and some of our main thorough fares, to notify people that it is a violation in Chino Valley.
Did you have your hand up, or you wanna say something? Since, since you started this in the county, it's your fault, and I, I support this a hundred percent.
I support.
The county has already gone out and ordered forty-six signs so far. We've talked to ADOT in regards to this, and hopefully, we all hope that ADOT and the state decides to make this a state statute, so it's uniform across the entire state, but that's to be seen. In the meantime, we're just putting up signs on county roads. We will not put them up on state routes, because the state route, they may come out with a different sign, it's a city or a county sign. On a state route, people be confused, so until the state comes through, we're gonna avoid putting it on the state routes. Now, obviously, I would suggest you could put it on your main routes in and out of town, like on Three North, or Outer Loop, or Four North, or Four South, and those different locations, it would probably make more sense to get the word out. Also, as far as the education of the public, it becomes effective November second, and contrary to what the chief has said here, I think there might be a confusion that you can still be cited by the sheriff's department in your town if you're talking on a cell phone, and by the county ordinance. I believe the city police can also enforce the county ordinance. Remember that we'll enforce all laws of the state of Arizona, so.
Okay.
Anyway, those are some of the issues. But the sign, the development of the signs, we already have ones, we gave a copy to the signs that are gonna be coming out from the county to the city, so if they want to adopt something similar, it's just change the bottom where it has the code number on it from your individual city. There is a division of funds that occurs on fines, so you need to cite under your city provision.
You betcha.
So, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Supervisor Brown.
Do it.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Questions? I need a motion.
Okay.
Looking for direction to give.
We're gonna give them direction.
Okay.
We're gonna give them a motion. Do it.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to recommend, or we already discussed, so we're gonna make a motion to.
Good luck with that.
Excuse me, ask direct law enforcement to go forward with the regulating portable communication devices and texting while operating a motor vehicle.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you very much for coming.